Good evening. Today is September 14, 2021. The time is 5:34 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. We will ask Mr. Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County, and continue to remind us that all that we do as stewards over the land and resources is for the pursuit of the truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move on down to the approval of the agenda. Please note that there's a recommendation to defer item 15A to nonprofit spotlight. Also a recommendation to move the following items forward on the meeting agenda, item 15B and item 15C. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda with the notice changes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, properly moved by Mr. Carolina and seconded by Mr. Anderson. I think I saw your hand first, Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, with that being said, we'll move to item 15A with recognition of employee of the quarter. 15B, I'm sorry. Mr. Ackerman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to come before you tonight to present Ms. Barbara Moore as our employee of the quarter. Ms. Moore is a... She's employed in our Parks and Recreation Department, and she is a maintenance-type person. She does maintenance on all of our Parks and Recreation facilities, minor maintenance, making sure things are safe for the public so that we don't have accidents, anything major generally. She reports those incidents, and our facility services will handle them, or we may end up contracting that type workout. Well, this past year, it became quite evident that we had a major problem with a lot of our beach accessways, and I mean a lot of them. Some were fairly new because hurricanes had forced a replacement of those beach accessways, but some that had remained relatively unscathed in the past had succumbed to time and age and rot and those type things. Barbara brought that up to the attention of the folks at Parks and Recreation and as well as facilities maintenance. But as you all know, due to COVID, we were facing severe labor shortages in our Facility Services Department, and we really couldn't figure out a way how we could devote that time to going and doing all those repairs. Barbara stepped up and said, "You know, it's a little out of my scope, and I don't really know what I'm doing, but if you can get somebody to show me the basics, I'll go out and take care of it." And it was not an easy task. Hopefully, you all got a chance to peruse the recommendation, but I want to point out a couple of things. Barbara handled over 200 two-by-four-by-16-foot boards, 80-something two-by-twos, a whole host of different lumber, and the most telling thing I saw was she used three 25-pound boxes of stainless steel screws in her construction efforts, constructing those beach accessways. She was recognized by the Litchfield Homeowners Association for all the work that she did. It really was kind of above and beyond. We gave her a little bit of help here and there when she got to some of the heavier, more complicated things. I think she fought a lot of spiders and snakes and other kind of critters like that out in her work, but she got the job done, and just in time for the tourist season and the accessways were safe. We had no problems, no incidents, so hats off to her. She really pulled us out of the fire with her efforts, so we would like to now recognize her as employee of the quarter. I think she has a little speech. I'm just kidding. But along with employee of the quarter, she should be recognized with a plaque, some time off, entering into the newsletter. And we will now ask if, Mr. Chairman, if you will come down, and we'll grab a quick photo for that newsletter. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore, for your dedicated services. We will continue with Mr. Ackerman with the innovative award presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. One... My mic keeps going a little in and out. This is an award that we don't give very often. This is our Innovation Award. And there's no real set criteria for submission. So we don't have necessarily... Now it's working, I'm sorry. We don't have necessarily a set criteria for the Innovation Award, so things can run the gamut. If memory serves, the last time we presented an Innovation Award, it was for a unique method for dealing with bedbug infestations developed by one of the folks at the Fire Department. So now we're going on the other end of the spectrum, and this is Michelle LaRocco. She is the manager at our landfill department. She deals with everything associated with waste and all the folks out there that push trash, do recyclables, collect things from the recycling centers, all that other stuff. So it's quite of a large department, and it requires a lot of innovation and technology to do her work. Well, as you recall, back in the spring, we had a cyber breach which forced us to go to a new email system, and as part of that, Office 365. So this was a technology that none of us were familiar with. We didn't have time to train on it and implement it properly. Michelle took the bull by the horns and really delved into it and decided that this was a very powerful tool, and she was going to try to get the most out of it that we could possibly get out of it. So a couple of the things that she has done, she developed an electronic approval process for travel in her department, which they do a lot. They may have to go out of the county for one thing or another, and she works under the Public Services Department, so probably our largest department. This really saved a lot of time, saved a lot of energy, a lot of back and forth, shuffling paper from one side of town to the other, maybe from the landfill over to the courthouse and back and forth. The other big thing that she did was, as she was going through, she decided, "You know, if I can use this stuff, it would behoove us to have everybody using it." So she did a series of training videos and put them out for folks to look, watch these videos, and go through step by step on how to do different things, and hopefully opens people's eyes as to what they may get out of this software that would help improve their function in our government. One thing that wasn't listed on here that she did that I was very impressed with, we had a need for a stopgap measure for dealing with asset disposals. When we need to sell vehicles or equipment that have become end-of-life, there are several different steps that has to go in that process, and Michelle says, "Oh, well, I think I could fix something with that," and in like two hours, she had the greatest little tool that you could possibly imagine. It was so user-friendly, visually acceptable for everybody. It gave you the cues that you needed to know, okay, this one's ready and this one's not ready. I don't know how she does what she does, but her work with Office 365 and really pulling us to the forefront of being able to use that technology so much more is the reason why she's receiving our Innovation Award. So hats off to Michelle. Thank you very much. We won't be shaking hands, but we're going to go take a picture.
Congratulations again to both of our employees. We move on down to the public comment. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that we do have a time buzzer. When the buzzer does sound, we ask that you conclude your comments at that particular time if you have not already concluded them. With that being said, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for the public comment?
Mr. Chairman, we do have six speakers signed up tonight, and as you said, each will have up to three minutes. The first speaker for tonight is Dan Stacey.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of council. I just have some items on the agenda tonight for zoning in sections 7 and 10. I don't have any presentation tonight, but if there's a council member that has a question, I'm just here to answer if it comes up. So if you need me, I'm just available. Thanks.
Wesley Gibson.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank council. I saw item 15D. I would like to thank council for taking this into consideration. I saw on Gab News there's a possibility of naming the track after Olympic gold medalist Antoine Maybank. I would like to share a few thoughts. On August 3, 1996, Antoine Maybank placed Little Georgetown City in Georgetown County on the world map by winning a gold medal from the 1996 Olympics. Since 1922, there have only been two Olympic medalists in the whole state, and he's the only... Well, three now with the young lady from Charleston, but he is the only gold medalist named from South Carolina. His rise from Black River Road to the best in the world in 1996 makes him worthy of this honor. I think Antoine's story needs to be told. This young man graduated from back school. He learned track and field where the track is today. If you Google his name, you'll find nothing but good things written about him. His reputation is impeccable. He's humble, he's motivated, and he's dedicated to helping young children of all races to be the best that they can be. In closing, Antoine Maybank is educated. He's a world-class athlete with a world-class character, and most important, he has a world-class reputation. This track, if named in his honor, will give young people of Georgetown and other areas in the state an opportunity and an inspiration to maybe be our next Olympian. Please vote yes for this change. Thank you.
Peg Howell.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for your service to Georgetown County. My name is Peg Howell, and tonight I want to again comment on rezoning items 7B and 10F on your agenda regarding the proposed RV campground in Georgetown. I don't have anything to gain personally from my positions on this matter except to express my concern as a county resident about putting up to 700 camping families in harm's way by citing this campground a half a mile from a chemical plant with an abysmal safety record. At the August 24 council meeting, Mr. Dan Stacey, attorney for this property, made an important point. He said, quote, "Although I've heard some safety issues, apparently safety was not an issue when it was zoned for single-family homes," unquote. Well, most of us weren't here or in the capacity we now serve in 2006 when the zoning of this property was changed from FA to single-use PD containing 348 single-family lots, so I can't speak to what was or was not said then regarding safety. Hopefully, in 2006, someone in the zoning department or elsewhere researched the safety record associated with that chemical plant. If so, they would have learned that beginning in 1996, there were multiple serious safety violations there, including in 1997, nine serious violations related to spill-response training, process safety, respirator use, and other PPE resulting in fines totaling over $20,000. In 1998, partial inspection lasting six days following hospitalization of nine contractors and three employees due to exposure to hazardous chemicals and three serious violations relating to the accident resulting of this chemical exposure and hospitalization of 12 individuals. Fines totaling over $25,000 were issued then. In 2002, there were five serious violations resulting in fines totaling almost $6,000 relating to confined space egress and lockout-tagout. With the benefit of hindsight, one might wonder if homes weren't built in this planned development over the last 15 years because no one wanted to live within a half a mile of this chemical plant. Regardless of what led us to this point, you're being asked to approve a change in the zoning from this unsuccessful PD to a 700-site RV park. This decision point provides us an opportunity to review the safety record since 2006. After the PD was permitted in 2006, there was one fatality and three injuries as a result of multiple violations of confined space entry regulations. In 2007, 12 serious violations were noted resulting in fines totaling almost $33,000, and one willful violation resulting in a fine of $28,000 for failure to have confined space permit procedure. Total fine over $60,000. In 2008, there were five violations, and then on March 27 of this year, the plant experienced another accident releasing hazardous chemicals. Six employees were exposed to these chemicals, and one person died. So I'll cut to the chase. As someone who personally has worked in extremely hazardous industries and someone who grew up as a camper, I believe it's critical that your zoning decision provide for safety for the community and for the purposes which you are zoning for. A resort RV campground's a great idea. Let's find somewhere else in the county to put it, and I please ask you to deny this zoning change.
Gary Weinreich.
Chairman Morant, members of the council, and Ms. Christian. The residents of the Wacoma Neck are upset and frustrated because we feel Georgetown County has abandoned us. We come before you because we care deeply about our communities and all of Georgetown County. What we expect of you is simple, that you adhere to state and county laws and procedures when you make decisions. We should not have to beg you to comply with your own ordinances and mandates. It should be the foundation for all that you do. Unfortunately, we have seen many instances in recent years where you have failed to do so, and it is costing the taxpayers a lot of money. For example, as of today, taxpayers have had to pay more than $200,000 in legal fees to defend the Marlin Quay lawsuit. dollars in legal fees to defend the Marlin Quay lawsuit alleging that the county failed to follow proper procedures in its decision. This huge expense to the taxpayers could easily have been avoided by making sure law and proper procedure was followed. Another glaring example is the county's failure to revise the comprehensive plan. It's required by state law and is now more than three years overdue. An attorney for three large citizens groups has had to threaten the county with a mandamus lawsuit just to force you to do what you're already obligated to do. And how much will this cost the taxpayers? You continually vote to approve zoning changes that increase density on the Waukamau Neck, contrary to the plain language of our current land-use plan without showing any public benefit as required by your own ordinance, and in the face of hundreds of not thousands of residents who voice opposition. It's only a matter of time before one of these decisions is appealed in the courts, again costing the taxpayers money. But the most recent and most egregious example of the county not following the laws is the massive self-storage facility that the county permitted near the southern entrance to Merle's Inlet Community. I don't know if you've seen it, but this warehouse clearly violates a multitude of provisions of the county's zoning ordinances. When taxpayers, taxpaying citizens of the neck wrote a straightforward letter asking our county administrator to please explain why this was permitted, she referred our request to the interim county attorney, whose office is one hundred and eleven miles from Georgetown County. The county attorney responded by telling the citizens of Georgetown County that the county is under no obligation to answer our letter or explain these violations. Well, we feel the county has a duty to correct the violations, and how much will this cost? I'm sorry to say this, but in the opinion of many citizens, Georgetown County's performance is at an all-time low. Instead of addressing the concerns of the citizens openly, transparently, and authentically, the county makes excuses, refuses to take responsibility, and tries to cover its tracks. There's no accountability, and the citizens of the neck are growing weary. And thank you for the extra time. And Ms. Teresa.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here today coming out of Apache Road. I'd like to first ask a couple of you a few questions. It's simple questions. If you don't agree with it, don't raise your hand, but if you do, first thing is voter integrity. Do you guys believe in one vote, one person? Secondly, no one raised their hand, then I would have thought that you guys would agree on that. Secondly, do you guys believe in price gouging? Okay, last spring, I come to you guys only to get laughed at and say that I was a problem at the last minute. Since that time till now, I have come to find out that you guys are allowing ordinance, tax ordinance in this county to be passed by multiple votes. Three in four people are allowing to be voted. You guys give me the excuse that the reason y'all allow this to happen is because these people have to vote multiple, I mean, has to pay multiple fees to hook up. Okay? On top of that, four miles of where you start in this water from to where you're coming to my house, you charge the residents a hundred and fifty dollars. You're trying to charge us twenty-three hundred dollars. Told us if we would go ahead and hook up, it would be twenty-one hundred dollars. So I'm here today asking you guys, if I become a millionaire tomorrow and I decide to go into your community and I buy up all the land in your community, does that give me the right to change the tax ordinance, water ordinance, and other ordinance in that community because I have multiple land, which gives me multiple reasons to vote? If you go and look at the Constitution, the Constitution straightly says you have one vote, one person. You guys can sit in here, and y'all can label it how you want to. I got laughed at. I've gotten assaulted since I have found and discovered this information. I have come to you guys. I have went to the senators. I have contacted the governor. I am trying to contact whoever I've got to contact, and I'm going to get it out there, and I'm going to expose what you guys are allowing to do. Because all of these ordinance that these people are sitting out here today talking about is going to be passed or wondering is going to be passed. Ladies and gentlemen, I recommend that each and every one of you start coming here and making sure that they're not allowing people to vote three and four and five times to pass that ordinance. Because in my community, they allowed it, and they sat right up there and agreed with it and saying that it was okay. Not only that, when you have a public meeting, and this gentleman was just talking about the COVID-nineteen situation, in the middle of the pandemic last year when nobody knew anything about this pandemic, you guys sent my community to a dog kennel to have a public meeting. Where's integrity there? Dog kennel slash quail club slash hunting club, whatever you want to do. The last time I checked, you couldn't buy wild game out of a store due to its cleanliness. So what makes you guys think that y'all can have a Zoom meeting on COVID and other, these other things, but yet send your citizens, old folks, to a dog kennel slash quail club slash hunting club slash whatever, only to not tell us? And then you didn't even send a Georgetown County Water and Sewer official. Every official that was there was not, no one was with Georgetown County Water and Sewer. They put a Georgetown County shirt on each and every one of the individuals. So if the people that did go there, the residents that did go there, when they asked a question, they could not get a legitimate answer because no one knew the answer, only for them to tell us that they would have a new meeting. I brought all of this up to you guys. This is nothing new to you guys sitting up there on the board today. I explained this on a Zoom call that y'all made me have due to COVID, but yet I had to go to a dog kennel to try to stop tax for my family and me trying to raise kids and raise a family the right way. And I would like to make an explanation, and I think you guys should do a public audit on your voting system, and I think you should do a public audit in Georgetown County Water and Sewer and how they price gouge the system. Enough is enough, guys. It's time for you to stand up and do your job and quit allowing people to vote all the time.
Cindy Person.
Hi. Our issue is what called.
That's the final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move down to the approval of minutes. Recommendation for approval of minutes for the council work session on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval for the minutes on January, I'm sorry, July twenty-seventh, twenty-one, twenty-one for council work session, please raise your hand. Oppose? The motion passes. For our regular council meeting on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, is there a motion for adoption of those particular minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. By virtue of the approval of the agenda, we approved two matters included on the consent agenda and have been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number twenty-one dash zero three seven and for Land Survey Services and RFQ number twenty-one dash zero three eight, General Engineering Services, East Andrews Drainage Improvement. We'll move down to public hearings. The first public hearing pretend to ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-six. Do we have anyone to make comments regarding the public hearing for ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-six? The public hearing is not open. Seeing one, we are going to call the public hearing closed with ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-six. Moving down to public hearings regarding ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-eight. That public hearing is now open for comments.
Thank you again, Chairman, and members of council. As you receive public input and consider how you'll vote on the change to the future land-use maps in order to enable the RV park, let's review what you know as indisputable facts in this matter. The property was previously rezoned as a planned development, and not one home was built. The property is located only three thousand feet from Three V Sigma's plant that receives, stores, processes, and emits hazardous chemicals. Third, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has published that Three V emits over a quarter of a million pounds of hazardous chemicals to the air every year. You have heard the nine-one-one recording following a chemical reaction earlier this year that resulted in the release of twenty-three thousand pounds of a hazardous chemical and the death of one employee and the overexposure of five others. You know that the prevailing wind direction during the peak camping season is from Three V toward the proposed campground, and the travel time for a chemical plume is three, could be as little as three minutes or less. You're aware that the county spent three point seven five million dollars on the Penny Royal Industrial Park, zoned it heavy industrial, and is recruiting business with high-paying jobs, and it is directly south of this proposed campground. Three V has a safety compliance history that is twenty times worse than the industry average, the details of which Peg made you aware. Three V is a relatively small chemical company with only two hundred and twenty employees, but since nineteen ninety-seven, they've had two occupational fatalities, twenty-one chemical exposure incidents, thirty-four serious safety violations, one willful violation, and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fines assessed by OSHA. And that doesn't include the incident that happened in March. The bottom line is there's not a worse location in all of Georgetown County to locate a family campground than the one you're considering tonight. Approving this this evening will violate your responsibility to implement zoning that protects public health and safety. It could very possibly hinder our ability to recruit heavy industry and jobs to the Penny Royal Industrial Park. It could likely expose campground employees, camping families, and young children to hazardous and potentially cancer-causing chemicals that Three V emits during normal operations. And finally, a fire or other accidental release, such as the one that occurred in March, could cause panic and result in injury or worse to unsuspecting campers. Voting to approve this proposed change could easily result in multiple lawsuits that could cost the taxpayers millions of dollars. A few minutes ago, we were a hundred percent with you when you invoked the Almighty to help you engage in meaningful discussion and to give you the wisdom to make decisions that are best for humanity. The question now is whether you will vote accordingly. Thank you.
Are there any other comments regarding ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-eight? Seeing our hearing, public hearing for ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-eight is now Let's move on down to appointments to boards and commissions. We first have the Accommodation and Tax Advisory Committee, Councilman Newton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Laura Joseph to the A-Tax Committee. She has faithfully served and would like to continue serving.
Thank you, Councilman Newton. You've heard a recommendation from Councilman Newton to recommend the reappointment of Lauren Joseph to the Accommodation and Tax Advisory Committee. Is there a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Congratulations, Ms. Joseph, for your here. Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Newton.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Mr. Michael Morris from Andrew's to the Parks and Recreation Commission. He has, this will be his first time serving if elected. He has served as, on the Board of Directors of the Andrews High Yellow Jacket Booster Club. He has also served previously as president. He has served as president also for the Dixie Youth Baseball in the county. He has also coached rec-ball previously, and he's also coached high school softball. He's been active for many years with the Parks and Recs in the county, and I'd like to nominate Michael Morris.
Thank you, Councilman Newton. You've heard the recommendation of Councilman Newton for the appointment of Michael Morris to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals, Councilman Anderson.
Yes, I would like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Marty Farrell to the Zoning Appeals Board. I had the opportunity to spend some time with him, and this fellow's a graduate, college graduate, had double major, and one of his majors was planning. And after college, he went off to the city of Pittsburgh and was in planning there for some time, and then went out and started his own business. He's retired here now on the Waukamau Neck, and I think he'll be a fine addition to our Zoning Appeals Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. You've heard the recommendation of Councilman Anderson for the appointment of Martin Farrell to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the appointment of Martin Farrell to the Zoning Appeals Board, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Let's move down to appointments to boards and, I'm sorry, resolutions and proclamations. The first proclamation we have is proclamation number twenty-one dash twenty-five in recognition of September twenty-twenty-one Suicide Prevention Month. September is nationally recognized as Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to promote awareness of this often stigmatized subject and to educate the public about the suicide prevention resources available to the community. A request has been made on behalf of the National Alliance on Mental Illness that Georgetown County Council adopt a proclamation to show support and to promote suicide prevention efforts taking place at our local level throughout our region and across our state. Suicide is preventable. We have attending with us tonight Skeisha Guess-Black and also Robert Acheson.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Council members, I really appreciate this, this last-minute injection into your meeting. My name is Rob Acheson. I'm the Executive Director of NAMI Charleston Area. We serve Berkeley, Dorchester, Charleston, Ori, and Georgetown Counties. We provide free support to families and individuals affected by mental illness, and what you all have done to make this proclamation is perhaps one of the most effective things we can start doing immediately to decrease the number of suicides, deaths by suicide, and that is talking about suicide. So I commend you on this proclamation, and I appreciate your support, not only for NAMI and what we do for the community and what your community members do, but also for the broader concept that we as a community can combat suicide. It is a symptom of severe mental illness. It's not a choice, and I really do appreciate, and our Board of Directors appreciates your all's attention to this, and please know that we are a resource for this community, and you guys are not alone. And before I close, if you will, Mr. Chairman, I would like to also add that I was in the county for another reason today. Six months ago, our Board of Directors put out a call for a mascot designed to all middle school students in the five counties we serve, and today I was surprising Mrs. Brianna Gaspardo school students in the five counties we serve, and today I was surprising Mrs. Brianna Gaspardo, who is a seventh grader at Waukesha Middle School, who won our contest. So a seventh grader from Waukesha Middle School is now going to have our mascot, her design as our mascot for the foreseeable future. So that's quite an impact, and I just want to congratulate her as well. And again, thank you, council members, for all you're doing in making this proclamation, but also in enhancing the fact that we as a community can put an end to suicide. Thank you.
Month in Georgetown County. Mr. Ellis.
May, I apologize. I don't mean to interrupt. I do believe that a vote will need to be taken as it relates to proclamation number 21-25. I feel confident in the council's decision, but I think it would be best to put that officially on the record.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We'll go back to proclamation number 21-25. Is there a motion for adoption of proclamation number 21-25?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Councilor, for bailing me out of that one. Appreciate it, because we already gave out the proclamation. Now we go down to proclamation number 21-26. Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, Chairman Morant, members of council. Before you use proclamation 21-26 proclaims October as Fire Prevention Month in Georgetown County. As you all know, we are not immune to home fires here in Georgetown County, and in an effort to mitigate the occurrence of these disturbing events locally, the Georgetown County Fire EMS as well as Midway Fire Rescue will take part in Fire Prevention Month as well as Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week will occur October the 3rd through the 9th this year. It is an effort to better educate our community on fire safety, and this year's theme is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. We will focus on emphasizing the importance of smoke alarm safety, installation, maintenance, along with the importance of having a home escape plan. Joined this evening by members of Georgetown County Fire EMS as well as Midway Fire Rescue to recognize this proclamation should you choose to proclaim it. Unfortunately, Merle's Inlet Garden City Fire Rescue was unable to attend this evening. Subject to any questions that you might have, we submit this proclamation for your consideration.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Ellis? Is there a motion pertaining to proclamation number 21-26?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Is improper moving second that we present proclamation number 21-26? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Oppose? And we go down to resolution number 21-27, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Our Madam Administrator.
Good evening. On March 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Act Plan of 2021. As a part of this federal fiscal recovery aid for state and local governments, $65.1 billion is provided in direct aid to counties. As a part of this package, the county is allocated to receive $12 million. We have received the first part of the allocation, $6 million, in March of this year. What you have before you is a second request allocation for monies to be primarily spent on infrastructure items. The total is $2,131,719. As I mentioned to someone earlier today, as they were talking about the kinds of things that we could do with this, do with our allocation, it has become abundantly clear. The rules keep changing, and the devil is in the details. As of yesterday, we received information from the Governor's Office that more of the monies that have been allocated can be spent for streets and bridges. This was a totally different discussion from what we were initially led to believe. And with that, with this allocation, as more rules come forward to us on how the monies can be spent, we will continue to monitor and watch for allocations for monies to be spent for the betterment of Georgetown County. It goes to full range of activities, and we want to make the best decision that we possibly can for all citizens of Georgetown County. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Are there any questions for all Madam Administrator? Hearing now, is there a motion pertaining to resolution number 21-27?
Mr. Chairman. I'd like a motion, make a motion to defer this line item. Reason being is this is phase two of this, and as Madam Administrator has said, this is $6 million so far that we've received. And when I looked at the information that was available, I'd just like to be able to have us hold a workshop and look at these line items and talk about these line items and make sure that we're all together on which way, which direction we're going in as far as counsel in where we're appropriating this money to be spent. Thank you.
Is there a motion by Councilmember Anderson to defer ordinance number 21-27? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion dies. Is there another motion pertaining to resolution number 21-27?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt resolution 21-27.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is improper moving second that we adopt ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution number 21-27? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Five one. We move on down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 21-22, an order to establish guidelines or regulate outdoor open burning within the boundaries of Georgetown County, South Carolina. Mr. Ellis, our Emergency Services Director.
Good evening again, Chairman Morant, members of council. Ordinance 21-22 is before you once again. As you said, it establishes guidelines regarding outdoor burning. As we previously discussed, these guidelines are in accordance with all the state guidelines and regulations relevant to outdoor burning. One of the main caveats that comes from this is it allows us certain latitudes and authorities to issue local burn bans when we determine it is necessary based off of fire weather conditions or natural disaster states, so on and so forth. Subject to any additional questions that you may have, staff recommends that you approve their reading for this ordinance.
Any questions for Ms. Ellis? Seeing now, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 21-20?
So moved.
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Move down to ordinance number 21-23, an amendment to Article 3, definitions in Article 13, tree regulations of the zoning ordinance relating to tree protection, removal, and replacement. Rich Richardson, our Planning and planning enforcement director.
Yes, sir. Good evening. As we said at the last meeting, the main reason for this amendment is the preservation of existing tree canopy and to require our developers to design around the existing protected trees. The main changes are an amendment to the definition of a grand tree from 30-inch diameter breast height to 24 inches, and the required preservation of 10 trees per acre or 100 inches of DBH per acre for non-single-family development in both the rural and the urban areas of the county. The other changes are listed in number five of your report. We have also added the potential for a 20% waiver of setback by the zoning department in order to save a grand tree on the site with the exception of the 90-foot setback on Highway 17. We feel that this, these proposed changes represent a significant improvement over the existing ordinance, especially in terms of tree retention over tree replacement, and the Planning Commission voted after several public hearings to recommend the ordinance with a vote of six to zero. If you'll recall, at second reading, we did make an amendment to exempt solar farms from the requirements, and there is now a change here at third reading that deals with the general penalties section of the ordinance that was recommended by the county attorney. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson?
Holly, we talked, the last time you brought this up, about the, I guess, fines or misdemeanor, and there was a $500 cap. Was that correct?
Yes, Mr. Anderson, there is a cap as it relates to the amount that is jurisdictional as it relates to all the courts and any type of violation of a county ordinance. The amendment that was made upon my recommendation was removal of the jail time provisions, the 30 days as it relates to the tree removal. Having a possibility of a violator be exposed to potential of 30, up to 30 days in jail should they be found guilty of violating this ordinance could trigger the rights and responsibilities of what's known as the Sixth Amendment, the right to counsel, as elucidated in the South United States Supreme Court, Alabama versus Shelton. So in other words, an individual who was charged with this particular ordinance facing jail time could then turn around and, based upon their financial condition, ask for and be granted the right to a public defender. If it's solely just a financial fine, then that particular, that right is gone. There's no need to give someone a public defender at that point in time because they're not facing jail time.
So having said all that, let me try to digest what you just told me. There is, it's going to have to stay a misdemeanor and with that cap based on the jail time issue.
Correct, the removal of the jail time, but the financial fines are still in place.
Right, right, I understand that. And there's no way we can do anything about putting a different cap on that 500?
The fine itself is capped. There are provisions that potentially could be added as relates to remuneration. Basically, there are other jurisdictions in South Carolina that provide that it's one thing to have a penalty or a fine, but then to turn around and then to require a violator to then pay in a certain amount for future trees to be planted, et cetera, as relates to the removal of any grand tree, for example.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was headed was, you know, it sounds as though a tree is a tree, and it $500 is $500. And if I went out and cut down a live oak that was 12 inches in diameter, it'd be $500. And if I went out and cut one down that was five feet in diameter, it would be $1,200. And we've got no recourse based on the magnitude of what was done then.
As it relates to a fine, that is correct. There is a possibility that the ordinance could be amended at a later date and time to include that. Recompense is one term that's been used in other jurisdictions. Ms. Richardson and I, we checked, I think it was Charleston County, we've looked at their ordinance, we've looked at some of the municipalities, Conway and Myrtle Beach. And each particular jurisdiction has a different way of creating those fees, those recompenses or those type of fees, based upon, in certain instances, it's the size of the tree, in other instances, it's the number of the tree, et cetera.
But you're saying that we wouldn't do that until we decided to take a second look at this ordinance?
That, yes, that is correct.
So what we're looking for is approval of what we've got tonight, and then we can follow up at a later date.
That is correct, and I'll also ask, make sure that Ms. Richardson's.
I would add, Mr. Anderson, we do have, and Charleston County does this as well, requirements for replacement. If trees are removed without a permit, that can be done in addition to the fee, and those requirements are different. If a grand tree is removed, then the ordinance that's proposed says you would replace inch for inch. So it might take a lot of smaller trees to get you there, but you would have to do more replacement if you removed a larger tree. The fine might be the same, but the replacement would be different.
So this is a process in work.
It may certainly be that we do want to see more refinements as we, you know, as we start enforcing this ordinance and we see how it plays out in real life.
Thank you, Ms. Holly, and thank you, sir.
Are there any more questions for Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion regarding third reading of ordinance number 21-23?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And as Ms. Richardson stated, there have been some revision regarding the language. Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the revised language?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We first vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? And we go to the main motion. All in favor of the main motion? Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Ms. Richardson. Ordinance number 21-26, still with us?
Yes, sir. Items 10C and 10D are connected. One is the rezoning, one is the future land use map. This involves the rezoning of four parcels located on the east side of Highway 17 in Litchfield Landing. Lots 5, 7, 9, and 10 are currently zoned GC and are vacant and are proposed to be rezoned to R10. Lots 6 and 8. Lots 6 and 8 of this development are not included in the proposal, and as of right now, will remain general commercial. I know that the applicant, Mr. Stacy, has reached out to those property owners, and we have drafted a letter to go to them as well, once this zoning is approved, to let them know that and hopefully encourage them to zone as well, so we won't have those, a commercial piece in the middle of two residential lots. The R10 zoning allows for single-family dwellings, as does the GC zoning on lots of the same size, but rezoning to R10 will allow them to have a reduced front yard setback of 25 feet, as opposed to the 50-foot front yard setback in the general commercial district. The future land use map shows lots 9 and 10 as commercial, and lots 5 and 7 are transitional. The nearest medium-density residential designation is just northeast of these parcels and are the Wakemaw Trace Plan Development. An amendment to the map is needed for this request. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request with a vote of five to one. And under Item 10C, you'll see the Planning Commission also voted five to one to recommend an amendment to the future land use map to change those parcels to medium-density residential.
Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? Pertaining to ordinance Number 21-26, or ordinance Number 21-27? Seeing as there a motion pertaining to ordinance Number 21-26?
I move for a third reading approval of ordinance Number 21-26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of ordinance Number 21-26, please raise your hand? Oppose? Motion carries. Ordinance Number 21-27, there a motion pertaining to ordinance Number 21-27?
Mr. Chairman, I move for a third reading approval of ordinance Number 21-27.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of ordinance Number 21-27, please raise your hand? Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance Number 21-28. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Similarly, Items 10E and 10F are related. This involves the rezoning of the Bluffs at Northampton Plantation PD to a flexible design district to allow for a resort RV park with associated amenities and ancillary services. The Bluffs at Northplant, Northampton Plantation PD was approved in 2006 as a single-use plan development for 348 single-family lots. Seventy-four acres of the project were zoned CP or conservation preservation at that time, and those, that acreage will stay CP. The FDD portion is approximately 186 acres. The FDD calls for 700 RV sites, or a number not to exceed 700. The gross density of the project is 2.7 sites per acre with a net of 4.7 sites per acre, which is classified as medium-density. Number seven in your report lists the proposed uses, but they basically include an RV park and a marina with associated amenities for the site. The sites are typically 23 to 35 feet wide and 60 to 75 feet deep, and vary in size from 1,380 square feet to 2,625 square feet. As we discussed last time, a traffic study was completed that calls for the installation of an eastbound right turn lane on Harmarket Street and a U-turn lane at the median openings to both the east and the west of Shady Grove Lane in accordance with the requirements of SC DOT. The conditions, the recommended conditions for approval are listed in Number 22 of your report. We also had some additions that we went over at second reading, which include the enclosure of a fence for the camping areas and signage, the prohibition of fireworks at the development, and a lighting plan that would be reviewed by staff. The Planning Commission held two public hearings for this request. One person spoke at the June meeting, and no one spoke at the public hearing for the July meeting, except for the applicant. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request with a vote of four to two. And regarding item, the previous item regarding the future land use map, the Planning Commission also recommended amending the future land use map to commercial in the front to accommodate the commercial uses and medium-density residential for the remainder to accommodate the medium-density designation for the camp sites. And that was also with a vote of four to two.
Thanks, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Seeing as there a motion pertaining to ordinance Number 21-28?
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 21-28. Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of third reading approval of ordinance Number 21-28, please raise your hand? Oppose? Motion carries. Ordinance Number 21-29, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance Number 21-29?
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 21-29, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand? Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We move down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance Number 21-23. Ms. Carissa Langston, our finance director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. Ordinance Number 2133 is amendment of the budget ordinance adopted by County Council on June 22nd. The original budget ordinance reflected the wrong millage amount for the Midway Fire District 2 and the Solid Waste Recycling and Collection Fund. The error was clerical in nature, and this correction will have no impact on the previously adopted budget figures. However, because of the ordinance document is the official record of the county, the fiscal year '22 budget, this matter does require adoption of an amendment ordinance to correct. Staff requests that you approve adoption of ordinance Number 2133 to correct this error.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Are there any questions for Ms. Langston? Hearing none. Is there a motion regarding second reading of ordinance Number 21-33?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the ordinance text?
I make a motion, we amend as listed.
Is there a second on the amendment? Thank you. We first vote on the amended motion. All in favor, all in favor, please raise your hand? Oppose? We'll go back to the original motion. All in favor of the original motion, please raise your hand?
Thank you.
Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to first reading of ordinances, and we'll just read into the record. Ordinance Number 21-34, to approve the 2021 revision to the cultural resource element as part of the county's comprehensive plan. We'll move down to Item 15D on our agenda. Request to name Beck Running Track and Field Complex in honor of Antoine Maybank. Ms. Johnson, do you like to have a minute?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do appreciate Mr. Gibson's remarks as they relate to Mr. Maybank.
Mr. Chairman, her, her mic is not working properly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that better? Yes or no? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, for your remarks as they relate to Mr. Maybank, who is a native of Georgetown. And I consider it an honor to be able to make this nomination in reference to him. He's a product of the public schools here in Georgetown. He matriculated at Iowa University, where he earned distinguished awards in terms of his track field endeavors. He's a world trever, traveler. And because of the efforts that he made and achieved while he was at the university, he was also a sponsorship for Nike. And that's a name that, of course, is well-known. He's humble, he's quiet, he's a mentor of young people, which is one thing that he believes in wholeheartedly, because he feels that if we can save just one person, we've made a difference. He is one of the many firsts in Georgetown County. And I believe Georgetown County will be proud to call him a native of this county, having earned a gold medal in the 1996 Olympic. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion that we name the track and running fields at Beck in honor of Mr. Maybank.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there a second on Ms. Johnson's motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to take a word on this. I had the pleasure of being at the 1996 Olympics. Correct? That's, that's the one, that's one, and I probably saw this young man win that gold medal. The one I remember that day was Michael Johnson, when he ran the 200-meter, and, and still holds a world record for that. So this is a really a big deal, folks. And I, I think it's a great honor that he's from Georgetown. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the motion, please raise your hand? Oppose? Motion carries. We now have, have your Running Track and Field Complex in honor of Antoine Maybank on 1996 Olympic. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We have some legal matters we need to take care of in executive session. We have, we're going to elect, we are requested to go into executive session to obtain legal brief from regarding pending litigation involving a county and possibility of negotiated settlement pursuant to SC Code annotated 30-40-78-2. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of us going to executive session, please raise your hand? Oppose? Okay, we're now in executive session.